Hi John, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you guys, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep, perfect.
Yep, we're gonna get started here pretty quick.
Sounds good, just holler at me when you're ready.
Well, sorry, they're all three, great, there you go. And then, three more. So, two more. What? Your work for David? There's a nine to go there.
Probably the stocking stuffer.
Great. So, eight. Alright, so we're gonna call this meeting to order, it is five thirty. Please stand up. Unfortunately, we constitute the plan of the United States of America and should be drawing permission stands, one nation, under gun. Great. Also, I'm gonna read our mission statement and partnership with communities, the mission of the Good Work for NFL School District is to educate individuals in an environment of present and respect so that they become self-directed, responsible lifelong learners. As always, we just wanna ask the public that is joining us, for no opers or disapproval or disapproval happening during this business meeting, we want to remind the public here and at home that we value each other's opinion and we can respectfully disagree with one another with conduct in our meeting in a respectful manner. Thank you much. So... Uh, we'll call, um, all board members except David is in attendance, David will be showing up late. So, when he gets here, we will make that noted. We also have Superintendent Hunstead and Mr. Lepard with us. Okay, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Great, do we motion to approve it?
Someone?
Motion by Brittany, is there a second?
Okay.
Second kind of call, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carried, six zero. Uh, no public comments, five point two, our low recognition, anybody have any team? We got a choir concert tonight?
Yes, we do.
And kindergarten over there did a fantastic job, uh, last Thursday, it was super cute, I cannot believe that they can wrangle a hundred and five or whatever it is, kindergartners over there?
Yeah.
They sang like ten or eleven songs and all of them were really good, so, it was cute.
And I snuck into one classroom for their practice session, if you saw that, I know they took some pictures of it on Facebook, I guess. But, same thing, they just, they were great, so they said, "We gotta give it a good trivia." But anyway, we did, and it was fun, they did a great job too. It was kinda the practice, one of the practices, yeah, it was awesome.
Did any of your kids do the daddy-daughter?
Oh, that too, yes.
Okay.
Maybe they had, and Tracy did a big good job, the daddy-daughter dance, my daughter had a lot of fun.
Yes, it was adorable.
Pretty good.
Decorated, uh, very Christmasy, with the candy canes and stuff, but it had a blast and forced, you know, music and fun.
Yeah.
But how can you go wrong?
A hundred and seventy-six, a hundred and sixty-seven couples are, you know?
Yeah.
And she said it was by far the most we've had, and she said it was...
The gym was packed with visitors and different colors, and it was really, it was like prom.
Yeah.
For like, for like little ladies. Just like sparkly purses and, I don't know, so they could barely walk in, I mean, it was...
Cool.
Tyler's answer was very good, and he said, "Kudos to whoever organized it, all the people organizing it, every just goes next on the job," he said, so...
Wonderful to hear.
I don't know who organized it, but...
Oh, that's pretty creepy.
Tracy was about ninety-eight percent, and if it wasn't her, it was her.
Well, he didn't tell up the Tracy's name, but it said, well, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
She doesn't do it half-speed, it's...
The area has had their first band concert last week. Almost like twenty-five trumpets. Whoa! And had like, you know, four saxophones and, you know, there was, there were so many, it was, it was fun to see them, so... Wonderful. And David has arrived, for the public watching, welcome. We're just doing recognition, do you have any?
Um, the band concert that they're in, it's really excellent.
Was this the high school one?
The high school band concert, uh, not a lot of ninth graders, but they really did excellent. Let's see if they're actually good, so...
Good.
Yeah, fun to see.
Good. Alright, wonderful, so, we're gonna move on to six point one, we have our audit report, we have our representative from Ida Bailey, welcome. You have the floor, John.
Hello, everybody, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Alright, if there's ever, uh, technical issues whatsoever, just stop me and holler at me. Um, I'm going to try sharing my screen now here.
If you guys all see your, yeah, make sure you have, this here is exactly what you allow on the screen, but if you can't see it there, we figured you better have it.
So, can everybody see, um, hopefully a smaller version of my face, so you don't concentrate on that, and rather a bigger picture of a little boy holding a lightbulb?
Yes.
Yeah, sounds good. Um, I appreciate you guys having me here tonight, it sounds like you guys have a, uh, Christmas concert to attend that is standing room only, I hear, so, um, I'll try to keep this short and sweet, um, and open it up for questions at the end, uh, we may discuss if needed. Um, but again, my name is John Hagan, I've been with Ida Bailey for about six years, um, doing governmental audits, specifically school districts, for the grand majority of those years. Um, so tonight, we're just gonna briefly go over what we call the executive summary, um, which presents some June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, um, financial information in a little more user-friendly format, along with some comparative numbers of previous years. So with that, we'll kinda jump right in and get started. Um, we'll go over what everyone wants to know about, you know, what are the results and the findings of the audit? So, the, the district did receive what we call a clean opinion. Um, the technical wording for that is a, a unmodified opinion, so we as auditors, um, we come out there through a series of tests and procedures and obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance, um, using those procedures to express an opinion. Um, management of the district is responsible to ensure that the financial statements are prepared in accordance with GAAP, that there are no material misstatements, and that they are presented fairly. Um, so through, through our opinion, we do express unmodified, which again is a clean, meaning that everybody's, um, ducks were in a row and everything was, um, reported correctly. Along with our financial statement audit, kind of a second-tiered portion, uh, we do a separate audit of the federal funds over the district. Um, this is a, a federal requirement, anytime a, a governmental entity expands more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, in federal awards. Uh, the district this year did spend just a tad under one point seven million, um, so they were required to have this federal audit, uh, and this is similar to previous years as well, um, just based on the size of the district. So, we do plan separate procedures over different federal programs, this year, the two federal programs that we needed to look into, um, were the child nutrition cluster, uh, which is basically your food service, and then also the coronavirus relief fund, which was a new federal program, and kind of a COVID-nineteen relief package. But again, we do procedures over specifically those two programs to get to an end goal of another opinion, uh, we did express an unmodified opinion over both of those federal programs. So again, a good clean bill of health. So with expressing an opinion, um, we do have to report on different findings that the district may or may not have incurred. There are kinda different sections of, of areas that we look into, the first one being the financial statements, uh, the district did receive three findings associated with the financial statements. Uh, these three findings are segregation of duties, preparation of financial statements, including the CIFA, and then the material journal entries. Now, all three of these findings are pretty related, um, and they mainly relate to districts with, that are a little bit smaller in, in nature. Um, would be similar findings to what you guys would have seen in previous years, um, and something that we see pretty much across the board with our smaller districts. Um, so nothing to be overly alarmed about, but we are still required to report on them, um, it's not necessarily cost-effective for you guys to hire, uh, county department and financial department needed to properly segregate duties across the appropriate number of people, as well as the preparation of the financials, that's something that we at Ida Bailey kinda take on as part of our audit, so... All three findings are, are pretty, uh, standard, um, and expected as part of the audit. Um, the second section would be our federal awards, uh, there is no findings to report on this area, and the third section is a, is a specific Minnesota area, um, specifically to school districts. The first two findings that we have here relate to the student activity accounts, um, the first one being lack of approvals, um, on some of our student activity disbursements that we selected in testing, and the second one being inactive student activity accounts, uh, which was mainly due to the inability to do functions because of COVID-nineteen. The third area here is insufficient pledge collateral, um, which is a fancy way to say that the deposits that the district had, one of the financial institutions was not properly collateralized as of a magic date of six thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Um, in talking with Shannon and the business manager, uh, there's been communication with the bank to have this corrected going forward, and a lot of time stems from just timing of, of payments and maybe, um, receipts coming in, but, uh, we are required to report on that. So all in all, um, nothing that kinda, we would consider unusual, um, fairly similar stuff to what we see in other districts, but just wanted to make you guys aware of, of what we found out over the course of our audit. So with that, we'll kinda jump into some of the numbers here and take a dive into the cash and investment balances. Uh, I won't spend too much time on this, but did just wanna point this out, um, with a comparative purpose over the last ten years, to see where the district's cash and investment balances are. Uh, one thing to note, this does not include the capital projects fund, um, just because the timing of, of projects that can occur, uh, cash balances are gonna swing drastically, so we kinda leave that out just for comparative purposes, um, so this is all other funds of the district. There was some growth in two thousand twenty-one with cash balances, uh, probably due mostly to a lot of the new federal money that was received in the district this year, uh, but they can also change year to year depending on timing of, of state payments and such like that. But all in all, pretty consistent. Next, we'll do some additional consideration, uh, over the general fund specific, uh, to get things started, we'll go over some ADM numbers. Uh, again, just for comparative purposes, to see where the district is at, obviously, a lot of the revenues and expenditures of the district is derived directly from the amount of students that are being served, um, so just for kinda for comparative purposes over the last ten years. Uh, sitting at the end of the year, just over fifteen hundred students, fairly consistent over the last couple of years. Next, we'll go into a budget-to-actual comparison, um, high-level bucketed numbers here with, with revenues being the top portion and expenditures being in the middle. Uh, first column is your budget, second column is your actual year-end numbers, and the third column being your variance. I won't spend too much time on this, other than kinda pointing out a few of the areas. First one is the state sources, you can see, actual numbers came in less than what was reported on the final budget, um, mainly due to decrease in ADMs throughout the year, as well as less special ed services performed during the year, I know that's a tough area to budget, um, because it can vary year to year. Also, there was about two hundred and fifty thousand that was budgeted or has revenue in the general fund, that was actually received, um, through long-term facility maintenance in Fund Seven or debt service. So the budget was a little bit higher than what actual, because that money was coded, coded into a different fund. The other bucket of revenue there, um, is mainly due to less student activity and related revenue for admissions and such like that, um, mainly due, due to COVID-nineteen. On the expenditure side, those buckets were much more in, in tune with, with budgeted amounts. Slight decreases, again, for expenditures kinda correlating to, um, the state sources above for revenue with, with less, um... Excuse me, less special ed services needed, as well as some staffing changes due to decreased ADMs throughout the year. Um, all in all, we'll get to the end of the year at almost break even with about seven, six to seven thousand, uh, of expenditures over revenues, um, bringing your year-end fund balance in the general fund to about two point seven million, or the very bottom number. We'll kinda focus in here on that number and the breakout of that in the coming slides, so keep that two point seven number in mind. So what does the fund balance mean for the district? Well, positive fund balance, um, contributes to favorable bond rating for future projects and endeavors, getting that better interest rate is always cost-effective for the district. Uh, two, it also produces investment income, you know, having your money work for you through interest rates and investment income. And then three, most importantly, offers a cushion for unexpected shortfalls. You know, with the state always changing kind of their formula and stuff, just having that buffer to get you guys through, um, some down months or years in, in future. So the fund balance does have different categories, um, I'm not gonna spend too much time, but just basically note that there are different categories of fund balance, and we'll kinda be touching on those here in the next couple of slides as well. Uh, here is a breakout, oh, got ahead of myself, here is a breakout of the general fund, uh, fund balance as of the end of the year, again, the bottom number there is at two point seven that I pointed out, uh, so here's a breakout. Uh, the first one is your non-spendable, which matches prepaid balances or encumbered amounts that you guys have already kind of, uh, spent the money for as of year-end, and also inventory balances, that's your seventy-two. The next five or six categories there are restricted amounts, um, based on state-imposed numbers, and then the last column, or last line there is your unassigned, which is your, kind of your true, uh, rainy day fund, or what, what the district has complete control over. Continuing on another graph showing, uh, the year-end fund balance broken out by category over the last ten years, again, just comparative purposes for you guys to see kinda how, how it stacked up over the previous years, but all in all, pretty consistent, um, over the course of the last ten years. Uh, kinda as you're taking that in, um, you know, the orange portion of that bar graph is your unassigned, uh, which we will get kind of into here in the next slide or two. So again, that unassigned is your true rainy day fund, um, so where should the district be? Well, the district does have a policy to maintain a minimum unrestricted fund balance, which is basically your unassigned, um, of no less than ten percent of annual expenditures and no greater than fifteen percent. So that range there in the current year equates about one point eight to two point seven million. So that is the district policy, which we'll touch on in the next slide as well, um, but other, uh, GFOA recommendations, uh, this is a recommendation for across all governmental entities, so not specific to districts, also doesn't account for the differences between, um, rural entities or smaller districts or anything like that, but they do recommend about sixteen point six percent, um, just kind of throwing that number out there for comparative purposes here. So the next slide here does show this unassigned or unrestricted, uh, fund balance over the last ten years as a percent of annual expenditures. Uh, the two maroon lines there are the district policy for minimum and maximum amounts or goals, um, as you can see, the last handful of years, the district has came in under that policy amount, um, but remain fairly consistent. In talking with Shannon, I know this is something that he's taking a deeper dive into, along with the business manager on, on ways to kinda get that number, uh, going forward back up into that range that the district has set, set aside. Um, just one other item, just for, for again, more comparative purposes, um, the state average for this number is just a tad over twenty percent, um, again, that doesn't, that's across the entire state, so, um, you know, more focused into the state, into the bigger city areas are gonna have higher numbers, where rurals are usually, uh, smaller in nature, but, um, just another, another ballpark number for you guys to keep in mind. So that does conclude, uh, the general fund consideration, before I go tonight, I do wanna just quickly touch base on a couple of the other district, or other funds within the district. Uh, first one being community service fund, uh, this graph here shows the fund, ending fund balance as of six thirty, over the last ten years in that community service. So at the end of two thousand twenty-one, sitting at a tad over a hundred thousand. Um, for the most part, and, and kinda these, um, non-operating funds of the district, the main goal is to almost break even, so anything in the plus is usually beneficial, um, as you can see, you guys have always been there, uh, in community service. Lastly, we'll touch on the food service, um, similar to community service, having a positive fund balance with six thirty ending number at a just tad under a hundred thousand. Um, the maroon line here does indicate an, an MDE maximum allowable fund balance, so not, not really anything you have to worry about, or anything that we see across other districts, um, but just kinda putting that in there for your purposes. Um, one other item I would like to point out is, in previous years, the food service has been supported by the general fund to some extent, um, via transfers, uh, for example, in two thousand eighteen, there was a fifty-five thousand dollar transfer into food service, and then last year, there was a twenty thousand dollar transfer. Um, whereas in two thousand twenty-one, the food service was a complete standalone and did not require any transfers to aid in that ending fund balance number, um, so that might explain the slight decrease in two thousand twenty-one was because of, of not having that transfer. So with that, that does end my spiel tonight, uh, before I go, I would like to open it up, uh, to any questions that anyone may have, or areas that, um, that they'd like to talk about further, uh, does anybody have anything?
Maybe it's a little something, maybe, as the same thing.
Are we gonna get the original or the whole book thing down the road here? Yep, I asked for one for each of you, the district calls that three, one. Yep, it's got it all under, yep. Right, John, when do you, do you have an idea of when we might get those booklets, uh, that we talked about earlier today?
Yep, so I did, I was, I don't know if you saw this yet, Shannon, but I was able to email you over the final PDF versions of those financial statements, as well as this executive summary that we presented today, um, so you should have online versions, and then the, the mail, the kinda hard copies, bound copies, will be sent out in the mail here, probably tomorrow, so you should be seeing them by the end of the week at the latest. Um, if you don't see it, just holler at me and, and I'll check in on it.
Okay. Perfect.
Any further questions? Thank you for joining us, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much, before I go, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to Shannon, um, and Brady Martz, business manager, and, and just the finance department in general, in helping us with the audit. Um, you know, we're out there for a week, and we're pretty demanding as far as requests and providing information, and even when we leave, we're still bugging them via phone calls and emails, um, and they're great to work with, and they always provide information timely, so we really do appreciate their help, it makes our job as auditors much easier, so... Thank you, guys, thank you for having me tonight, um, if any questions do come up down the road, feel free to have Shannon reach out to me, and with that, I'll let you guys go, have a good night.
Thank you, John.
Alright, World's Best Workforce, uh, you... Not, not... So, this is your ten-minute spiel?
I heard it was like one.
There's a taxation at the...
I go, and it needs to be super clear.
Okay, so we have a handle for it?
We don't, so here's the deal, so I'm sorry, go ahead. Uh, I have it right here, and tomorrow will be put, if the board, as we go through, Wayne's gonna explain it a little bit, I didn't wanna make, cause it's like so many pages, I thought, oh my god. It will be posted on our website tomorrow, if you wanna copy tonight before you go, I can, most certainly, we could burn a copy for you, I have it right here, Wayne's gonna just touch on a few points about the World's Best Workforce, um, but again, I have a copy if you guys...
Why don't we, well, can you just, you know... Okay, we'll do that, we're gonna save trace.
Yeah, it's just, so, so after reading through it a few times today, um, I'm gonna highlight some things as best I can, uh, right now, so, World's Best Workforce is a report we've been doing annually each year, um, we've had to integrate or add to that an achievement and integration report, so it's, has one now. Um, essentially, what they are is, uh, it's a report that talks about, um, how we integrate different subgroups, um, like one for us is Hispanic, um, reintroduced lunch groups like that, um, anywhere, all the way from early childhood to graduation. Speaking for high schools, uh, middle school and high school, um, current college ready is one category, and we're, uh, and so in the report, we have to say if we're on task with certain goals or not, in making them or not. So, uh, current college ready, we are on task, uh, based on goals, and then, uh, for graduation rate, we always try to keep it at ninety-two percent or higher, last year was a hundred percent, um, it's always been in that range, um, so we're on task there. Uh, early childhood has, uh, tried to increase their, uh, preschool screening to forty-five percent, they're on task with that. Um, third grade, reading well, like third grade for math, uh, for reading, uh, is on task district-wide, it's not on task for the Hispanic subgroup, is on task for reintroduced lunch, um, and math is on task for all three, third grade, um, the Hispanic group, uh, is not on task district-wide for reading and math. So, um, there was a, is a category in there, um, it impacts the Hispanic group as far as, uh, COVID that year, last year, um, and so the data is kinda not there for us right now, we have to relook at articles for that. That is a very fast synopsis of the report.
When, uh, when certain kids, they leave our district, they still are on our report, right?
Yeah.
How does that work, is there, what's the criteria for them to stay on our report?
There's a certain date where they're not anymore?
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think, or is October fifteenth, I wanna say?
Oh, yeah.
I just knew that sometimes, some people stick with us, and, kinda on our...
The number, I think, it's either October first or October fifteenth, where we, the data, here's the deadline.
Another piece of this is the, they want your, um, they want your teachers and the adults in the building to represent the population of kids, the people that you're, that you have in the role, uh, we are deficient in that, uh, I have been deficient in every district I've been in, because we have certain populations that they wanna identify, and they wanna, wanna shrink that achievement gap, for sure we do. So then they ask, well, do you have, for example, Hispanic teachers? Well, like we stated, and I've stated in others in the past, if we had one apply, we would certainly interview them. If nobody applies, and I said, "That's the thing, we have to look at as a district, are we getting that word out?" You know, we call, right now, let's face it, in Minnesota, we call universities just to see if somebody's licensed. Can you, you have anybody graduating in this, with this degree? I mean, that's how hungry we are to find people, right? And so, it's hard to meet the diversity when you can't even get, I mean, you're taking anybody who can get with a degree, right? So, that's another thing they really want us to have, and like we said, we love that too, but, till then, again, it'll be posted, we'll share it out to Lindsay, we'll do that tomorrow, yeah, more questions, please, Al?
I have a question, when, I mean, like, certain groups are not on task, what does that mean exactly?
Yeah, so we set goals based on data, so, uh, I think, what did I say, the Hispanic group, reading is not on task for the goals that were set?
Actually, it's on track, is the word, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Yeah, it's on track, so based on your goal, are you on track to achieve the goal, and that's what Wayne's saying, we're not, on certain subgroups, we were not.
So then you work together to try and see if you're...
Relook at it, relook at what we need to do.
And then we have to have an explanation here of how are you addressing it then, if you're not helping it, so, then saying like our integrationists and some of those other things, that we recognize that, so, what are we doing as a team to meet those, or hopefully, the spending of summer school and lights and that type of stuff, so... Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Wayne. Uh, it is five fifty-eight, suppose we have to wait till six for through the taxation, so, let's jump to six point four for our may reports, and then we'll come back to through the taxation if we have someone else. You ladies have any?
We did, right after last Monday, um, it went well, there, um, she covered a lot of things that she was hoping to do, um, and of course, the major focus was follow down her hands, I kinda love the details going forward with that, they changed like the ribbons and things, they were falling off all last year, and I'm happy to report, they all seem to stay on that thing, so, that was kind of her, one, one of her big things, um, she had enough volunteers for that, so that was also good, and she's hoping... And she's hoping to get the um, uh, summer rec stuff out uh, coming up pretty soon. So that we can all take a peek at it and get that going, which I can't believe we're already against summer recreation. But I guess, we have to compare.
Yeah, I think they talked a little bit about prom, post-prom.
Oh, yeah.
And kind of figuring out how, how the parents are gonna, how the funding is gonna work and they're just brainstorming ideas, so.
Did she talk about school, childcare at all, a little bit maybe, or no?
Just, just a little bit. She kind of touched on that. And I think that, she covered that right at the beginning, but we were all still in a meeting.
Oh, sure.
Um, I think that was the first item on the.
Yeah, and I did visit, she visited with me this morning a little bit too. She's getting really close to fulfilling all the resp, you know, jobs. And so she's still hopeful that it can open right, right after the day.
Wonderful. Um, so it is six o'clock. We'll come back to board committee reports, but under respectful of our time, we put on the. Truth and taxation, so I handed over to Shannon and uh.
Yeah.
We'll go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, this is gonna be the most unique truth and taxation meeting I've been a part of. And, and one of the reasons, um, is that the audit just finished. I was not a part of setting this budget for this year yet. I will be doing that for January with Marcus. Um, and so those are crucial parts. Yep, you gotta have your truth and taxation meeting. We're having it today. I'm gonna talk to you about our levy change. It's a three point one percent change, so very little. Um, I would say of the hundred, so um, you, I, I gave you two sheets. This one, um, the one, and I gave you this because this is the beaten potatoes. So there's one, you see that little shade around the three point one? You see that?
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of in the middle of the page. I had it highlighted, so when you copy it, it turns gray. So if you look to the left of that three point one, that a hundred and twenty five thousand, that is the increase. In our levy. And then if you look at the numbers previous, so this is, the one is from twenty, page twenty one. Now this is twenty one, page twenty two, and the difference is that a hundred and twenty five thousand for a percentage of three point one. If you look up under general, it was over nine point seven, eight percent increase. That is, and I'm guessing you guys all got your proposed taxes for the coming year. And you probably, all your properties went up by a number. Mine went up twenty grand. And so if you look at the market values, the reference market value. That's where almost ninety thousand of this hundred and twenty five came from, is the increase in everybody's homes. Other things that affected enrollment, the, these other types of things, our enrollment has been stable. So when this was done, we were still up in that fifteen, a little higher than the fifteens. Now we're dropping a little bit because we've got some family labor, whatever, but. That's what really that is, and that's what you guys need to know, and our public wants to know, well, why is it up three percent? Well, we'll get your proposed property tax and pretty much tell you right there. Um, and, and that's really what this year, when I looked at this, um, and I looked through the levy booklet. From the state, uh, everything pointed right back to market values are up. And so that's really the increase. I just want to show you what it's going to look like in the future. When I do this presentation, there will be a PowerPoint presentation. It'll tell you that, hey, here's the cover sheet, much like we just had. I'm gonna talk about who are current board members, superintendent, who's our business manager. Uh, you're gonna see this has been the law, which starts time, but what do you have to, you have to have a meeting, you have to have this, this and this, just like we're doing tonight. Um, then you're gonna see our audit report. I'll have it all on here, so that I can show you the changes fund balance. Because if I'm the person paying taxes, I want to know what's happening to the fund balance. But tonight is kind of sweet. We just had the audit, tell you what's going on with it. So typically, that doesn't happen tonight. That's already done. So then I do a review on that, and just to show people, here's what's happening with our fund balance, seeing where we're at. The next sheet will be talking about our budget, because I want to set our final budget in December. That fall, it should always be partnered with the truth and taxation. I think you guys have usually done it in January, was my understanding. I told Marcus today, it will be in December, and it will be at this meeting. So we will be setting our final budget in this meeting for the rest of this, for that year, and that'll be next year. And then our levies and all that stuff will be approved as well in the truth and taxation. And it'll all be reflected here. We'll talk about what happened, or why, why did our final budget change from our preliminary in June? Could be enrollment, could be teachers, could be a building, you know, whatever, could be a bunch of things. That'll all be explained. Then the other thing you'll get is you'll get a pie chart that'll show you exactly what was spent in each category. Like we have in our budget every month, district office, transportation, special ed, elementary, high school, you know, all those. Those categories are here, so our public can see, here's what our budget is, here's where all the money went. It's important to share with your community, I feel, and a pie chart's a lot easier to look at than sheets of numbers like this. Thirty pages of this or a pie chart. Anyway, it's also easier to look at it, because we'll show percentages. So low entry and high school stayed about the same, one percent higher, two percent, ooh, cheaper, transportation was way up. What happened? Gas prices went up, or whatever. I mean, and you can justify it. So your community can really understand what's happening in your district. Why? Cause their taxes went up. Or hopefully they go down in the future, but then you can explain that as well. And then obviously the levy changes, so what did happen? So this is real. This was, this was our proposed now, or what we have, that we have to sign up on today, if that's what you guys decide. This was the, all the difference and the percent change. So after you explain everything, what's going on, then you show them. This is what we have to approve, or we're planning to approve. The percent difference is this, and just based on everything Shannon just went through, you should understand why. Okay? And then we ask people that question. Does the public have any questions about? There are, it's actually a three point one percent increase, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars more in levy across the entire school district. Do you guys, so I just want to show you what you're gonna get in the future. I just don't have all this stuff yet. The audit just finished. We're working on the budget, and it's, 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 we're working on the budget.
So you're saying most of the houses' evaluation went up?
Yeah.
Because my two of the old houses, the new one, with the one percent increase and the one point four percent increase.
Oh, really?
In every single one of my ag land ones, it went down to two hundred to minus forty.
Your, and your ag land, well, because you got credit on this building bonds too, you got fifty percent of that back. And so you're, I would say your land probably, your, your farm land probably did it for that.
But, it's probably gonna go up in another year because I think the.
Inflation.
You know, the land prices and sales are gonna increase the values in another year.
Yeah. Well, and as we know, like I moved here. I know what, we used to be able to buy a house from here, and I know it's changed. But every house that we looked at or tried to look at, half of them were sold before we got down here, and they were in bidding wars. And so when that happens, what happens, the state and the county, they have to look at that percentage. And if it doesn't align, then they gotta adjust it. And that's what happened here. As you guys know, the property values and homes in the part of Morehead area, D G F is a part of that area. It, it just was through the roof. And the county, it was an easy year for the county to say, oh, it has so much value. Why? Cause everyone, your neighbors sold for way more than that even. Really? I mean, I, I'm not gonna get into my personal plight with my house, so we won't get into that. But you guys, I'm assuming with your home, it, right, jumped pretty high? Yeah, mine went up twenty grand, so just.
And with the ag land thing, we're not up to that full seventy percent yet, are we?
No.
So we still may see an increase, but it's not gonna be as high as what you typically would. Based on land values, even though land values, they're kind of fluctuating.
They are not, land values are not acting like residential.
Right, right.
They are not, which, sorry, Ryan, going through the roof.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, you did, but hey. You do you.
So I presume that's why even on my house, I got the voter groups up and down. I suppose that's because of this percentage picking up.
Probably, yeah, yeah, that would make sense, yeah. So. You see, so like I have one sheet like that?
Yeah. Do we have any questions? Anybody any questions?
Yeah, this one sort of was kind of nice, that this year, it really was tied to that, and that's why we jumped. And again, it wasn't a huge jump, because if you did your numbers on your house, three point one percent, it was more than that. So, anyway, uh, in the future, I'll have a lot more detail to it, and it'll break it down. So if there's, is a crowd, they get to really see what the district is doing with their money. I think that's important. So we do have a sheet to think, do you, is there any audit? Cause we'll have, you're the clerk, you're gonna have to sign up on that, to the four point one.
Perfect. All right, let's go back up to six point four board committee reports, or back down, I'm sorry, board committee reports. Anything else, ladies in the community outside? Well, so we had our M S B A um, evaluation with Barb Lauren last Monday night, just for the public. Uh, we had a really nice discussion with Barb, just going over uh, superintendent, key valves and expectations. Um, and so we'll be moving forward this summer, uh, later review, Shannon in June, that was our plan. So, um, yeah, anything to add to that?
I guess truth reiterated what are our main priorities ever.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yep, so um, you'll hear a lot about us talking about our fund balance and supporting Shannon during this time. And uh, updates on building structure and I forgot what our. Strategic plan, there we go. So, yeah, no, it was a good discussion, so. Uh, David and Lori is gonna give us an update on negotiations.
Did you see the sheet that we gave you tonight?
I just, I just did.
No, don't have. Uh, so primarily what we've been doing is uh, working on the language of the contract. And um, really trying to simplify the contract a little bit. Um, in terms of, particularly in terms of benefits. And everything's tended, of course, because uh, and everything needs to be voted on. But generally speaking, we're almost through the language part, kind of adopted a framework for looking at benefits. Um, you know, some teachers were taking uh, pay over nine months, some were over twelve months. Trying to get to that to, to be consistent over twelve months, makes things a lot easier. Um, looking at benefit packages, um, in terms of, I think, we had two dental plans. So things of that nature, trying to simplify that. Um, right now, we've just, we agreed, we agreed to look at a framework with regard to benefits. So trying to look, try to provide better health coverage uh, for teachers. And um, looking at, right now, we have uh, teachers, if they take. The health insurance, they get sixty two hundred dollars for that. But they don't take health coverage, they get sixty two hundred dollars to use. In a variety of different ways. So we're trying to make a more of an incentive for teachers to take health insurance. We think that'll help with um, coverage. In addition to that, we think it'll be better for teachers. We should be providing that uh, better health coverage. And so, uh, as part of that, we've also agreed to provide uh, life insurance. As well as long-term disability. So trying to standardize some things a little bit. And get our contract a little more, what I would say, closer to normal maybe. I mean, every contract's got unique features. And so now we're just entering phase, we're starting to talk about college and sense. So when we've got that framework, we just have to fill in some numbers. So that's, that's the easy part.
We're meeting again next week, Monday. Yeah, we're meeting. Yeah, so we had a four hour meeting uh, last Wednesday night. So, it was, it was very productive.
It was. I think everyone's just uh, kind of looked the right attitude, and uh, yeah, it's been very good. And I would say, um, and I don't want to speak for teachers, but I, I think uh, they are looking at stuff. They took some time today to go through it. They're already chatting with us a little bit about what they're thinking. And I think if we do a little bit of conversation here the next couple of days, uh, I'm gonna be digging through what they're talking about. We'll focus out today in an email. I'm hoping then by next Monday night, we can stand up, shake hands, and add a, agree. I really hope that this week, we can kind of work through it back and forth. And so Monday's two hour meeting, we can finalize, I hope. Yeah, I think we are close enough where I think we can, you know, yeah, I guess that's my feeling. I hope that's the case.
Yeah.
And you're talking total contract done by then, or the one week?
I would say total contract, yeah. Cause we did the language pretty happy, other than a few little things that are tied.
Yeah.
Into money. So I mean, you kind of gotta.
With our health insurance section is tied to money, so we may have to grant that. But no, it's going well.
Yeah, and I think um, really focusing on some solutions in some of the contracts and. Pounds of substitutes and some of those kinds, it's been a really productive side. It's gone really well.
All right, any other committees?
We had a conversation just in policy, and that was um, reading and reviewing the red line policies. Everything's been recommended by the M S B A. Uh, we didn't see any concerns with what I have prepared this morning. We that was contentious, so tonight we're doing the first, um, first readings. So if anybody wants about, I know that, the email that, I know everyone's red line version is to my office, right?
I think it was just us.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the committee.
So if anybody wants the red line version before the second reading, don't worry. Will we treat it?
If you kill three for treason.
You think, not statute. Not change, yeah, statute change, but not really common law changes.
Yeah, and yeah, like Amy said, if you guys wanna look through the red line, I mean, it, it just really is. Honestly, these are kind of formality type things. It is verbiage, yes, statute, so, I, I don't know, nothing, just.
Yeah, more like a reference point.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds good. All right, well, let's move on to six point five superintendent.
Yeah, and I'll keep this quick, because we've talked, we've just done a lot of conversation already about any of these things. Strategic plan, just let you know the admin. So that falls last Friday. We had, I think there's like seventy nine responses, which is great. Uh, from that Google forum we sent out. Tomorrow, the admin team, it's at eight forty five to nine forty five, just to look through it. Kind of, what is it saying? Clean up any duplications, we'll get rid of. So if Ronnie and I and Laura said the same thing, well, you don't need it on there three times, we'll just have that on there one. So tomorrow's meeting is just to kind of take a snapshot of it as an admin team, clean it up, so it's all listed one time. Our goal is to have the staff on January, I'm gonna say seventeenth, it's March, we're looking to anyway, we have that workshop day. I want to meet with the entire school district in the theater to talk about a few things. The construction project, their budget, and these types of things. But then also, that's the day where they all can vote. On all, so we're gonna put them all together, so they can get their three stickies. I'll let you guys also have your votes. Because you're obviously a major beast in this. And then we'll put the stickies in, and after that, that's when the admin team will start to clean. Out of the thirty five priorities, we gotta narrow it to ten, and now we need to get that narrowed down to maybe five. And that's what the admin team will do with you guys as well, so, okay? After our timeline, so hopefully by June, which was a crazy goal from M S B A, I think that's okay still. We're gonna work hard to try to do that. Construction update, I've had so many construction updates with you. That I think if you guys have a question on that, we're meeting. Uh, just so you guys know, Lee, or J L G and Comstock did get together with all the changes we proposed. Um, they gave me the number tonight, right before this meeting. I just got it like ten minutes before you guys walked in. I looked at it, um, misunderstood some pieces, so I quickly texted Lee, he answered me right back. Uh, it's, it's got a lot of contingency and design fees in it. That I need clarity on. Uh, the overall, uh, they included a rough estimate to build a shop at one point five million. I think we're closer around a million, or one point two, which is fine, whatever. Um, and they, the number also included a ton of design fees, and we're not gonna have them involved in that. So I need to go through the document better. Um, I, I just need to go through the document better. I should just say that for now, because.
Just wanna include it on Friday when you.
Yes, I will. Yes. Yep, and that, and that'll give me a time to have a meeting with them as well. Yep, good point. So I'll give you the update on Friday. Any questions? This was super sweet.
My son tables in, he says that everyone pays lunch in the cafeteria today.
Right, so a week ago, yep, week and, week and a half ago, I said, Travis, there are spaces that are covered now. Get the contractors out, you got the week. And he told me, I'll have everything done by Friday. They can squeegee it, clean it, and we can move the tables in. So fantastic. They can squeegee it and clean it and we can move the tables in. So fantastic. It was over here last week on Thursday, Travis already had all those contractors out. They were taking that wall down and they were gonna be scrubbing the floor Friday morning. They moved all the tables in there. So it was today, it was the first day.
Felt like old times.
So now we can tell our elementary parents, we got a kind of a lunch from back, so. Anyway, what a, we're taking this as a major win. We're calling MSBA. So a month, that was a longer. We are today, so.
Um, where are we on the principal position that we posted?
Yeah, okay, so I wanted to have that ready for today, but I'm just not ready for that today. It's just not, I just can't. And yeah, I'd like to have posted it now before Christmas. That was my goal. It's December 13th and this is our one board meeting. And I had a few other items that I was working on and I just didn't.
I just wanna make sure I didn't forget.
No.
Like what we had talked about, so.
And on it, yeah, yeah. Nope, you didn't miss anything. I just could not get it ready.
No, definitely, just making sure.
No, I know. And I, I mean, I think you guys all know that we're gonna have 7, 800 kids over in Delaware next year with one principal. So, and I'm sitting there too, so, and I love kids, so I'm loving to be the principal, but I also have a few. And it's my wheel, I, anyway. Um, so we are gonna have to have somebody with her, with Margot over there. So we got, I just wanna find, I wanna make sure that when I present it, uh, I'm prepared. So when you guys ask me questions or the public does, or I, I just need to be more prepared and I just, I just.
Let's shoot for one of the meetings in January.
Let's do that. Let's try to do, I'll try to do it for the early one because I really wanna get this posted. I want the best people to apply. And most people have just graduated here now with their, graduated, but just received a principal degree, uh, over December. That's a lot of them when they wrap up, uh, with Morehead State, just, because I had to work with Chris Mills, who's kind of the doctor over there that day. So anyway, yeah, that's what we're hoping for. Other question, yeah, sorry, other questions?
Okay. Wonderful. Let's move on to 7.1, we're gonna be needing, this is approval of our November 22nd meeting. Is there?
Oh.
Which medical was there? Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Consent agenda, claim of health insurance, uh, $237,640.64. All right, also included in your packet is a monthly budget report. Um, this is to approve and file the audit for the treasurer's monthly budget report. We're also approving, um, donations from an anonymous donor in the amount of $75 in gift cards. For middle school PBIS celebrations, also donation from Arby's for formula coupons for middle school PBIS celebrations. And a donation from the frying pan and they want six meal coupons for middle school PBIS celebrations. So thank you to those donors, we much appreciate it.
No, you can, I'm sure.
I'm gonna give a second and then we'll have discussion. Second, David, and question or discussion?
Sorry about that. I just want you guys to know, I'm looking at this sheet and our percentages and all that, right? So this is wonderful, I like this, this is a way off. So I really like this and Marcus has done a nice job of it. But I want you to look so you understand, this says 32.45 and we're supposed to get 33%. The one thing that is not represented in this number is a little over 100,000 that has been taken out of our fund here. Or out of our general fund, that will be shifted to S R 2. So our percentage is gonna drop closer to, I wanna say 29.7%. So we are in better shape than what this is showing because it hasn't been shifted or coded to the S R 2 yet. Okay? And so as we move forward through some of this, and Marcus and I are gonna meet weekly now. Uh, we couldn't meet today because we had other things with I Bailey, we had those meetings, that's him and our meeting tomorrow at 11:30. Every week I'm meeting with him, so we're gonna start digging into this, so he can help create these documents and really get a deeper understanding of DGF. And so this number, I just want you guys to know that, that this is starting, I said, I don't like that number, what's going on here? And they said, that doesn't involve the S R 2. And he goes, no, that still hasn't been shifted out here to be coded there. So then I asked him, what's the number? It was like 100, just right around 100,000, that percentage then drops us closer to 30%. So I wanted you to know that because if you're like me, I'm looking at it, I wasn't liking where we were at.
Okay. Thank you for that verification. Any questions, more discussion?
Jim, that's your November, ended November, right?
Yes, yeah, so that's November. So it's 33 and it says 32.45, I'm like, I like a little more buffer there. Why? Because if we settle with the teachers.
Yeah.
You see this number?
Yeah.
I need a little buffer there because that's gonna go upside down. Potential, unless it depends on. I don't know.
All right, any other questions or discussions?
What is PBIS?
Positive behavior intervention system.
I know, all I know is it's, it's positivity thing.
It's kind of a culture and climate thing for the entire district, or I would say as a summary. Would you guys agree? That know about it yet? The schools have been in the basketball hat, so.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, let's move into new and unfinished business, 9.1, this is the fiscal year 21 audit. Um, was presented tonight by I Bailey and questions for answer, do we have a motion?
Who?
Motion by Ronnie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, any further discussion team? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
9.2. Final debate that you have to turn it into the county?
Yeah, we're gonna send it to him tomorrow. Yeah, and same with the, same with the levy sheet that has to get turned in. That's, yeah, the levy is actually December 28th, so we have a little room still, but we're gonna get it to him tomorrow. Yeah.
All right, 9.2, this is our, just a motion for the extra board bill check run. So there'll be an extra check run on December 29th for the fiscal year 22 bills. This happens every year. So do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion carries. 9.3, this is world best of course, this is a motion to approve the world best workforce summary report that has been submitted by administration to the state. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion medical, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9.4, certified final levy, um, certified amount of, what was it again?
1.4.
Or I'm sorry.
Yep, 1.4 million, 156,417 dollars and 10 cents.
Save it one more.
I'm sorry, 4 million, 156,417 and 10 cents.
Um, that is the amount for the 2021 table, 2022 levy, is there a motion? Motion medical, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9.5, this is the first reading of the following policies. 1, uh, 103, complaint student, employees, parents, other persons form. 421, gets to employees or, and school board members. 504, student dress and appearance. 510, school activities. 511, student fundraising. Um, 520, 522, title nine, sex nondiscrimination policy, grievance procedure and process. 524, internet acceptable use policy. 526, hazing prohibition. 616, school district system accountability. And 806, crisis management policy. Do we have a motion to approve? Um, question by Amy, is there a second? Second by Nicole, any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion carries. 9.6, this is confidential contracts as presented, they, um, these were sent out to via email, there is that, they are in the packet. Um, if anybody has any questions, uh, let's go ahead and get a motion. No, David, Brittany, you wanna be a second? Okay, Brittany, a second. Any questions or discussion for Shannon?
First, once we go switching for yearly salary.
Yeah, so, so I was gonna do this in my superintendent report, but I thought, why don't I just wait till this, because I figured we have it. So some, some things to see that are different. Um, those top ones, I switched to salary, they're all two-year contracts instead of one. I don't wanna do this every year. So some of them, you know, that are just gonna stay the same salary, so then the increases, yep, it's nice, but then it stays in the pros. We put no money in benefits or any of those things. Um, Brittany asked me some really good questions here in the last few days anyway. And one of the things, I, I have a, a sheet that is shared amongst many different tenants. Um, 30, 35, 40 superintendents in all their schools and then all their departments. Building and grounds, maintenance, uh, HR, payroll, tech, you know, basically all these confidential. And what is everybody else paying and then it has the years and the benefits. And I just took ours and I started to look at them and say, hey, we gotta get our people aligned a little bit into this Minnesota. The other thing is, is some of their duties are changing. Um, because I'm having them work nights. A particular person a couple weeks a week. Um, and the other thing is she's salaried, so she's not gonna get overtime anymore. So when you start figuring no overtime and she's working nights and, you know, when you're salaried, it's sometimes very good. Other times it's not so good because the state allows you up to 10 hours of extra time and, you know, I don't wanna abuse these people, I'm not saying that. So that's not the reason for saying that. But there are certain positions in a district that are salaried positions. And I felt we were missing that here. And so then I always say this, when you give somebody a salary, say, I need you to get the job done. Yeah, you might have to state in it for a meeting. Why? Because that's your job. Well, do I get overtime? It's your job. You know what I mean? So this is where I'm punching in and punching out, oh, what do I, it's just, I'm just gonna tell you, it creates a nasty mess at the business office too. So it just bonds down the system. There are other people though, that that position is more of an hourly rate. And so we kept those people there. And the reason that is, is because maintenance, snow removal can just tweak a system. And I can't put, I don't feel I should put them on a salary, because then what are we gonna do for snow removal? One year you get a ton of snow removal and next year you don't have any? How do you treat that person correctly? If they stay at an hourly rate, we can manage that a little bit better, they gotta punch in, punch out. I have constant conversations with Ryan and Ryan about snow removal and if they gotta come in on a Sunday because we had a storm. That is then easier to be managed at an hourly rate. Is that making sense, what I'm saying? Um, duties have changed, we have people that have multiple roles. Uh, yep, uh, I'll just use, um. So here's an example, Rhonda does HR and payroll. Well, if you look at other districts, some are sized, and this is what I Bailey tells you, we don't have enough people. Well, we're not gonna get another person to do it. But when you look at other districts, what's HR getting and then what's payroll getting? And some are sized, they put them together, but now their numbers are bigger than what we have in the responsible, I just. That's where the alignment piece came in. Brooke does our Mars, she does half our POs right now, she's, and that'll get better as Brady Marks gets better, but. There's just, and then per hours have changed because I'm asking her to work nights and every meeting we got. It just, when you start figuring out overtime and playing with that, I guess that's why you see what you see. But then when it's a nice raise, that's what you're gonna get for two years. Does that make sense, what I, the whole thought process? And, and it's not like I just went, I think that number sounds good. I took it, compared it to many other districts in our area and our region. Uh, the other thing is when you have good people, you wanna make sure you take care of them because you can't replace them. It's like we've had issues with trying to replace Cindy in the business office. You just can't find people. It just can't. So when you have some, it's good, it's not like they're just going, I'm not doing that because we're not giving you any more benefits or reasons and stuff. It's just, you wanna make sure things are taken care of, I guess. So that's where I came up with the numbers that I presented to you. And hopefully that makes sense.
Any other questions?
Um, with regard to salary versus not salaries.
Yeah.
And Rhonda looked at that in terms of like barely the same effect?
Yep, yeah, she has, in fact, after I had my thoughts, I shared this with her, this is a while ago. And she goes, oh, for sure that person should be a salary, yeah, yeah. So in her HR role for many years, she said, well, of course she is in that boat, so it's much, well, I don't wanna talk about me. Because I said, how about these, for sure they should be. I could tell you from personal experience in the other districts I've been at. The positions that I switched to salary were salaried in every other position, or every other district I've been in. So that also was something I took from past experience to say, why aren't you salary? I don't get that. It's just the way it always was. Okay, well, this is, again, I think, I'm, my process is to clean something up to make it easier. I don't wanna bog down and negotiate every year. Why are we doing that? That's ridiculous. Let's do it, be done. And they were happy, so if the board's happy, now happy.
All right, so we have a motion by David, a second by Brittany, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, 10.1, this is our next board meeting, is Monday, January 10th. 6 o'clock in the High School Media Center here, um, we'll follow with the budget committee at the conclusion of the board meeting. Um, this is also where we will, um, look at our meeting dates in January and then reorganization. Um, unless we wanted to reorganization, our second meeting, but I think probably the first one, even though, yeah. I feel like that's what we've done in the past. So what do I do? We'll do our officers and then when we print off, we'll look at the new committees and do that.
We should really go to the first weekend.
Yeah.
So the public, the public has.
Yeah.
The officers, you pretty much need to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Whoever, current chair, things, well, not meeting.
Right, so superintendent has, you know, and then hopefully our decision is fluid and quick and mutual. If somebody could just take over right after, yeah.
Yeah. So all right, uh, looks like we are adjourned here, so 7:36.
If you guys wanna leave this stuff, if you're running down the hall like I am, I'm just gonna leave my stuff, so I go to the concert. Uh, I will open this up, but it's up to you guys. If you wanna grab it, if you're not going to the concert, just grab yourself one.
David and Laura, can we, um, can Shannon have an eight or like five?
Yes.
Process, so if you have.
Maybe we have to.